State of the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one hundred of, and individual with liberty and justice for all.
Brings us down to special recognitions and presentations. And first up is the proclamation for the West Virginia School Service Personnel Day.
I'm still getting logged in. Yeah, it won't come out.
She's logged in.
All right. They all come down. You go read that?
Yeah, sure. Whatever you want to say.
I'm good. You read the proclamation. We're here to recognize our service personnel. We've done this every year. We have our union representatives here. So you read the proclamation, Mr. Lopez, and then we'll recognize them.
Okay. So this is a proclamation by Governor Jim Justice. Whereas school service personnel are involved in nearly every aspect of education by maintaining buildings and grounds, preparing and serving meals, keeping schools' facilities clean and orderly, and assisting in the classroom, as well as providing administrative support functions, safe transportation, and many other specialized services. And school service personnel are instrumental in West Virginia's responsibility to educate all students. And these dedicated individuals serve the children of West Virginia in our public school systems and have an important role of non-instructional services to the educational system. And it is fitting to recognize the outstanding work these individuals do for their state, their communities, and the students enrolled in West Virginia schools, more importantly, Harrison County schools. Now therefore, being resolved that I, Jim Justice, Governor of the State of West Virginia, do hereby proclaim September 23rd as West Virginia School Service Personnel Day in the mountain state and encouraging all citizens to join and observe us. So, you know, basically what we are here to do, and I sincerely say this, the outstanding effort that our school service personnel do, we couldn't operate our buildings, period. And not only in the schools, but throughout the county. You know, the service personnel stepped up. We don't open our schools. We don't feed our children. We don't clean our schools. We don't get our kids to and from school. We don't work on our school buses. We don't make repairs to our schools or make improvements to our schools and our school offices. I know when I was a principal, you know, I valued that significantly. Because when the service personnel were running things and operating smoothly, I had a lot less gray hair. Because it makes your schools run smooth. So I know you all are here just to represent all the service personnel in Harrison County. And we greatly appreciate that.
Can I have a picture for West Virginia School Service Personnel?
Sure. Sherry, you want to introduce, say who you are and what your job is and everybody here.
All right. My name is Sherry Talkington. I am the local president for West Virginia School Service Personnel Association. I'm also the state president for West Virginia School Service Personnel Association. And this is Sherry Lewis. And she is one of my officers here locally, secretary. And she is the cook in Harrison County.
You work at Salem.
You head cook.
Correct. Yeah. She's the head cook at Salem, so.
You're in good hands.
I'm Jim Linger. I'm president of United School Service Personnel of West Virginia. State and local president.
And just, I just want to say that, of course, if you work in a school system, just as Jimmy said, our school systems wouldn't run without our service personnel. Everybody's important to make the whole thing work, you know? So you're a big part of that, and we really appreciate that. And I just want to say that as union representatives, we appreciate you all working with us and keeping us all together in this, because we are all together. And so we need your help, and I hope that you rely on us when you need help as well. Anyways, we really appreciate it.
And also, I tell you that I really appreciate that the school board members have done an outstanding job, and I don't say that lightly, of supporting the school service personnel and advocating for them. So that, you know, again, I don't want to speak for you all, but it is very much appreciated.
And Angela is also a member with us.
Oh, yeah. Angela.
That's right.
Jimmy forgot about all the secretaries.
I said, no, I did say in the offices. But I didn't say a particular classification.
I had to remember.
And I'd like to get a picture for our state website.
Sure.
Sure.
Will we just take it? Can I take it? You want to get closer?
I'm sure we can do it.
All right. Three, two, one. One more. Three, two, one. Perfect. That works. Thank you, guys. Brings us down to item B, funding request from South Harrison High School. Mr. Moore?
Hopefully you've all had a chance to review the memo I sent out last week. We are looking to replace the sound system in our theater slash auditorium. The one we have is probably four to five years old, and it starts to show a little bit of wear because we have to disconnect, reconnect, as we're taking microphones out for choir competitions, et cetera. So what we're looking at is a combination of the different fine arts departments throwing in some contributions, the office throwing in a little bit of money, because I'll use it for assemblies, and I use the microphone sometimes, too. And we're asking for matching funds. The quotation that we have is from United Sound. I'm working on getting two others, but it's difficult to find sound companies that are willing to give you installation and not just equipment to travel this far to do so. But we're still working on that. But obviously, our maximum would be the closest there from United Sound.
And we are, you did get new lights, correct?
Yes.
So this should, this should complete it.
So this should, this will hopefully complete it and keep it updated. And I've already talked with Mrs. Trent about the fact that now that she's on campus, if we just schedule with things, that she can bring her kids over and use it as well for programs and et cetera.
I drove by the other day. Your campus looks really nice.
I forget the name. It used to be Dominion, and now they're Eastern or something like that, I guess, gas company. And they did so much work on our campus this summer. And you know me, I've always said, if it sits still long enough, I want to paint an orange. And I finally found somebody that would do it.
In fact, the orange looks good.
There's a lot of orange.
Yes.
But it does look nice. It's a nice looking campus.
Thank you.
I would like to, I would like to, I would like to do with candy, too.
It's within our parameters. You have 50%, and it's under 20. Our match would be under 20,000. So we'll place it on the next week, or the next meeting agenda if there's no objection.
Also, just, I know he used to do this, but John Burnett at, I remember it's more state grade, since AD.
I don't know that he's, he's not doing.
I don't know. That's what I was going to say.
He's on auto installation.
But he used to do houses. I was just thinking that someone did it.
Okay, that might be something I will, I've got my band, my band director is taking the initiative on this, so I will give him that name for the topic.
Yeah, I mean, I'd still call a house.
Okay. Thank you.
Actually, I was going to say, Showtime Music does do installations. Did you see Millen Call Down at the mall? They do PA installations.
We'll get our quotes. And if we get a lower quote, then obviously we would go with someone under that.
Okay. But we'll place it on the next agenda.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. That brings us down to item four, delegations. And we have three delegations tonight. And I'll read before we speak. Speakers before the Harrison County Board of Education are asked to express themselves in a civil manner at all times with due respect for the dignity, privacy of others who may be affected by the content of your comments. This is public notice that meetings of the board are audiotaped, and most regular meetings are videotaped to be televised later on Tom Warner Public Access Channel 18. While it's not the intent of the Harrison County Board of Education to ever stifle public input into deliberations, all speakers should be aware that if the public comment made here today violates the rights of any other person, especially under laws of defamation or invasion of privacy, you may be held legally and individually responsible. If you are unsure of the factual nature of any claim, comment, or allegation that you're about to make, the Harrison County Board of Education strongly encourages you to consult first with legal counsel. First up is Melanie Wolf of Lumberport. And each speaker has five minutes.
Hello. Thank you for letting me have the opportunity to speak to you today. I was going to begin by asking, is this the best that we can do? But rather than asking that, I want to ask, can we do better? In my entire lifetime and probably in yours, we have never been faced with such a time of uncertainty, fear, and division. People have been thrust unwittingly into situations that they didn't ask to be in in circumstances they could never have anticipated. You, as a board, have been called upon to make decisions regarding our children's futures and education in ways you couldn't have hoped to prepare for. It is my belief that you all are endeavoring to do the best that you can do in an unprecedented time in our county and the world's history. I can assure you that we, as parents, are doing the same. In fact, all that any of us can ask is for everyone to do the best that they can do and give grace to our fellow man. However, I will submit to you that at this juncture, damage is being done to our children on a daily basis. The statistics are not out because this experiment has never been conducted to forcibly mask children from ages two to 18 all day in a public school setting regardless of health, religious convictions, or personal beliefs. It's 2021. Can we really say that forcing our kids to breathe through saliva-soaked rags for eight hours a day is the best that we can do? We live in the era of Steve Jobs, Bill Gates, and Elon Musk, men who have forever left the imprint of their genius upon the world and its citizens, who have done tremendous good in advancing the culture and civilization of mankind. Do we really think resorting to 14th century practices to protect the vulnerable is the answer? Being relegated to wearing cotton masks all day, every day is that fest we've got? Seriously? My question to the board and to the superintendent is what measures are being taken to end the mandating of mask-wearing in our schools? What other options are being seriously entertained? And how much research has the board done to explore the negative effects of mask-wearing? The purpose of the board is to oversee the overall welfare of public education in this county school system. With masks continuing to be in place, is that being done? Has equal weight been given to the consideration of physical, psychological, social, and emotional outcomes as a result of forcible mask-wearing? What about academics? What considerations are being made as to the damaging effects forcing five-year-olds to wear masks has upon their educational development? I'm not here to point fingers, but I am, excuse me, I am here to insist upon accountability. We have elected you as a board to ensure that our children are receiving the best education possible in the safest possible environment. Can each of you in good conscience say that is being done? I believe we can do better. Please ask yourselves if certain accommodations can reasonably be made for students and staff without mandating masks. Have all options been explored? I believe they have not. You all have a responsibility to uphold the duties of your office and answer to the people of this community when you fail to do so. As a lifelong resident and citizen of Harrison County, I believe other options should be considered, and parents who are strongly for or against mandatory masking should be invited to the conversation. If we truly work together, I believe a fair and equitable resolution can be achieved for all parties involved. Let's do better together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fred Morris, Clarksburg.
Hello. I made it in this week. I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you, guys. No matter what you do up here, people are going to be mad. Everybody knows that. So everybody has the right to give their perspective. I did think it's rude when people that have a different perspective, but other people are angry at them for that. That seems a little bit insane to me, but it is what it is. And also, we're living in great times. I mean, there's no reason to be doom and gloom all the time. I mean, this is the best time on the planet Earth to be here. That being said, I just want to talk about masks a little bit. You know, you get boards. I guess where I'm disappointed is one of the rationales I'm giving, and this is in the newspaper, obviously, I haven't talked to you guys individually, is that we're going to go with the guidelines that are given to us from the health authorities. The reason that you set up boards or voted members on things is to get a reasoned perspective. Obviously, if you're a health person, you're only going to do one thing, and you're only going to have one directive, just like if you have a business czar that you're getting information from, they're only going to do what's in best. But we don't always do things that's best in line with doing business or own health. We make all kinds of terrible health choices all the time because we value eating crappy food and, you know, not exercising. And so you have a board that you bring out in front to give a reasoned perspective, like that's important to listen to one person's perspective, and then to put that through a prism of other things that have a counterbalance view. So I don't like, I feel like what I'm hearing, once again, it's not coming directly from you guys, what I keep hearing is that we're going to go with whatever these people say when you're our elected officials to represent a multitude of views. And it doesn't just have to be about health. We, like I said, we sacrifice health for other benefits all the time. So you have to have a cost-benefit analysis, obviously, of what you're going to do. And I do wonder, are we doing a proper, and you know, the previous speaker brought that up, are we doing cost-benefit analysis? I mean, I have a son that's in school. He's a senior. He's 18. He could care less about the mask. That's not the same for someone, this kid who's 12. It's not the same for somebody else. Maybe somebody does have an 18-year-old, and they don't want, I don't know. I'm only speaking for myself. But you bring in broad perspectives, you do a cost-benefit analysis of what they're dealing with. I would not want my six-year-old or my eight-year-old to have to wear a mask all day. Fortunately, I don't have to do that. One reason you do have a cost-benefit analysis is because you have to have limiting principles. And that's one thing I think that in the public that I'm frustrated with personally, there's never a, we're going to have masks when we hit this amount of numbers for whatever. We're going to loosen the requirements when it meets this number. There is no limiting principle. So this is what people are afraid of, is slippery slope. It's like, if it's masks, what else can be asked of us? And that's not a fair question. I understand we're in a pandemic and all of those things. Once again, a thought, reasoned approach. But there should be a limiting principle, and we're only going to do it under these circumstances. But that's not the kind of, we just, it feels like it's up in the air all the time. I don't understand why we can't make a premise around which we're going to apply these rules. If it lessens, there's numbers, right? We're using numbers to track things. Why can't we tie that to what we're actually going to do? You wouldn't do that in any other aspect of how you run your life or business. You don't just go, you know what? We don't know what our budget is next month, but let's go spend a bunch of money. No, you look at what you have, you go, hey, we have enough money this month? We got $500 extra. Let's go spend some money and have some fun, because you only live life once. Hey, this month, we're a little bit short. We have numbers. Why don't we tie the masks to the numbers? And then that's at least a reasonable approach that people can understand and know what they're doing as opposed to, well, they said we should. The other thing is, is there was a opinion circulating from Bowls and Rice about the ability for people to mandate the masks. Has anybody in here actually read the law underneath of that? Because if you have, one of them is about quarantining. It has nothing to do with masks. It has to do with who you're removing from public. You can't claim that you're quarantining people if they're wearing masks and walking around. They're not being quarantined from public, from, it's all under the quarantine. That's one. That's 1632. The other one, WVR 647-7, I'll just be finished. I think I can get it done in time, deals with outbreaks and clusters. And it's very specific, the outbreak, it spells out in that law that it's an event. It's not something that's happening overall to everybody. It's an event that happens, like Ebola, and it's very specific where it gets to, hey, if this happens in your school, if this happens in your church, if this happens in your, they can do this. But it doesn't, it's not a coverall for when people get sick. And so I don't know who issued that opinion, but if you actually look at the law, a layman can read it and go, these things, they don't apply. There's all kinds of rules under which, I know my time's up, just give me 10 more seconds. There's all kinds of rules in which you know it's an outbreak and how to implement the protocol. They have to do investigations, they have to report on a case-by-case basis. It's not something that you issue, and then it just happens. So I do encourage you guys, if you're looking at that opinion as a way to judgment, to look at the actual underlying law that they cite, and you tell me, reading it as a layman, that it works the way that it's stated to work in that opinion, because it does not.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next up is, actually, as a delegation, we didn't, we didn't get Mr. Gibson on the agenda, so he's speaking tonight as a delegation, since he was not on the agenda. So Mr. Gibson?
I'll make it brief. You'll have the fire in front of you. This has been discussed, brought up by various groups since I've been administrator of Robert Seabird for the past 10 years. A few years ago, they were talking about naming a field. It was controversial, so we kind of held off on doing this because we didn't want it to seem like it was a knee-jerk reaction in response to that. And we want to make sure that it was sincere. So we've always named fields and so forth after donor, major donors or whatever, who provided that field. So as of now, there's only one field at Robert Seabird Campus that's named. But in honor of a person who is synonymous with RCB, anywhere you go in the state, most people don't recognize me, but they always ask about this young man, or this gentleman who will be turning 70 in December. So we would like to recognize him by naming the road from Eagle Way, the main road going into Byrd, over to the stadium. So from the tennis court to the stadium, no one's ever went up and down that road more than this man in his lifetime. So we would like to name it Dougie Lakefield Lane.
I'd say just, I mean, we don't, we don't, I don't believe have to approve it. If we do, we can put it on there. Actually, let's go ahead and do, put it on the next agenda. I'm 100% in favor.
Thank you.
No objection to putting it on there?
No. This one has an actionable item.
Yeah, make it an actionable item. And that way, that way we've ratified it. But was there, were you planning on any celebration or?
Actually, we would like to do a recognition to get the time made and available two weeks from tonight at the homecoming, prior to the homecoming game.
Do we have a meeting before then?
What, what date is your homecoming game?
It's the 8th of January.
We have four of you on the list.
Okay, we'll handle, but you can, you can go forth either way, but all we'll need to do is ratify. I think everyone's in agreement here.
Thank you.
Brings us down to superintendent's update. Ms. Duffer?
Yeah, we have several things on here tonight. I know Mr. Lopez wanted an update on facilities, so he's got several things he needed to speak with you about.
Yes. First of all, in reference to the secure entrances in both Nuttford Intermediate and Primary, that has already been approved. I mean, the work has been approved and budgeted for it. But between that and also the paving at Bridgeport High School's parking lot, those two we had submitted to get, you know, to procure an architect. And committee took a look at that and would like to use Thrasher, enter into an agreement with Thrasher. And just wanted to update the board on that. After you guys are aware of it and there aren't any concerns, we can move forward with, you know, getting a cost on the project and also a fee for the architect.
What the, what was the school's, again, Bridgeport?
Bridgeport High School's parking lot, paving, and Nuttford Intermediate and Primary, secure entrances, which is, there's two of those, one for each school.
You mean, walking in this school?
Yeah, the, the secure Sally ports, you know, main, yeah, main tracks, they call them, secure entrances.
And Bridgeport is for the paving?
For the paving, yeah. And it's three phases. It's the main back parking lot, it's the area over to the left behind the middle school that you enter, and then also over where the, you enter the side entrances. And we'll use those as options. And we'll have to see what the cost comes in.
I was going, could you not, I mean, to me, if you was paving, would you not want to pay all three at one time rather than pay one now, then another part another time, and another part? I mean, I would think it would be cheaper.
I think that's what you're saying. You're just saying bid them. You have to bid them as three.
You have to bid them and then put them through.
One of them may come in, it would be a budget buster, so hopefully you can get all three. You would do them at the same time. It's just, you may not have the money to do all three, and maybe you do two this year and one next year.
Yeah, just, you know, be cautiously optimistic in the way we approach it, but still, I mean, it's the board that want to do all three.
Well, I mean, I just, I just think, because there's other parking lots that are going to need paving, and we need to add, you know, next year, there'll need to be another one. Two parking lots.
You are correct. I mean, the parking lots throughout the county.
And I understand what you're saying. Do it, bid, in the alternate case they came in, you know, we won't want to be held down to one huge bid if we couldn't. But we probably will be able to do them, I'm sure. But that does make sense to do them as three separate.
I mean, I understand it three separate, but I just think, you know, get it all done, you know, why would we want to continue to put it off, put it off, put it off? Because it's not going to get any cheaper.
Yeah.
Because once you do it one year, they're not going to hold that bid for the next year. They're going to say, no, I got to rebid it because of the cost of the materials or in labor and what have you. And so then you do another one, then all of a sudden, it just seems to me like it would snowball. And then they end up costing us a lot more money than going in one time, you know? Get them separate, but see what the three together, and then just do it one time. That's just my opinion.
Jimmy, if you don't mind me asking you a question, I mean, we've been talking about the WI, RCB, the whole situation forever. And also, that was one of the things that we had listed, since Mr. Gibson is here. They didn't go ahead and the excuse to me was because, until there was a decision on WI. Well, since that seemed so much up in the air, is there any way we could reevaluate that decision and move forward with improving and enhancing the entrance to RCB? I mean, I don't know how long.
The circle?
Yeah, that whole front, like, that's all that patio, there's no handicap, I mean, it's a walk clear from basically over on the edge of the gym to get to the front door for anybody. And I know a few years ago, we had this discussion on some ideas that could also be expanded out a little bit. It's, it's all in the budget, it's been in the budget. We just held off, was what I was always being told, until something was decided with WI. Well, I mean, I don't think we need to continue to wait on that for the convenience of RCB. I think it's an important thing.
You're talking about the backside, too.
You're talking the backside. I don't, that wasn't budget. I think.
I'm talking the front.
The circle. You could widen it for handicap parking in front of the front entrance and other gates.
Yeah, and Mr. Gibson's, that actually has addressed that with me in our department as well.
I'm just saying, I think we need to move forward with it. It's already in the budget. I mean, what are we going to do? Right now, WI is so much up in the air.
And even if not, it wouldn't affect that.
Well, no, I mean, I think it's time to move on that.
See, Steve shows up, and he gets stuff he doesn't even ask for. He just showed up, and there it is.
The, as far as facilities, I don't have a whole lot more. I mean, we've met several times, we've talked about some of the same things. Bloss Creek seems to be going well. As a matter of fact, Sherry talked and works there and had a good report from her.
She just wants a little more color, too.
Yeah, that's exactly.
Does she say that?
The one thing I do want, you know, since it's service personnel, we are.
He'll own your orange. You want an orange accent wall? He's got, he buys it by the 55-gallon truck.
Yeah. You know, we are also out exploring ways to get more substitutes. And I'm looking at service personnel, I know we need substitutes in every area. We're really low on substitute bus drivers. We've been hit with a lot of retirements. We're able to get everybody where they need to go every day, but we're extremely low. And I'm concerned. And we're going to try to infuse some more advertising. It still takes a little while to get those through the training. But I just want to make you aware of it in case there's a day that we have a lot of illness and can't run all of our routes. Fortunately, that's not happened. We've been fortunate. We've been fortunate.
And I think, I mean, what, what I'd suggest, I think it would help, is, you know, when we see different things happening, even like the Lost Creek Fall Festival like that, try to get a booth down there. It's a little different if you see an advertisement, you're still intimidated as to how, how to go about and become a bus driver.
Right.
But if you have a booth or a table where someone can come up and they say, you know, how do I go about that? And you have the information right there, and you can have someone explain the process to them right there, I think it, it would serve.
And I think I can take care of that right now. Did you hear that, Mr. Lane?
I just wanted to know.
I mean, do you agree?
It actually wouldn't be a bad idea.
It was, Jim was there, but we, we probably, you're right.
Well, I want to tell you, before we even started the super, I've been on here this West Virginia Learn, because I looked at our agenda, and literally this whole meeting, I've been trying to see how you get a substitute teaching permit, and I have about 15 different websites up, and everyone tells us, says, please review West Virginia BD policy 5202 for complete licensing required. I mean, I want to know how you do it. And this whole time, I mean, it's up on my screen, I can't find it.
Well, for a matter of accuracy, I, I would yield to.
I'm just saying, a lot of the processing, we need to make it sound.
And when we do, when we do our family day at the mall, we should have a booth for ourselves trying to recruit.
Well, we, and actually, we did.
We have, we have, oh, we had, we had a booth with the app there, yeah.
You're right.
We just need to do, you know.
But it's, but not a bad idea for all, we, we're really short on a lot of service, and if you'll see on the agenda, we have West Virginia Learns, the reason they're being brought in is because we just interviewed, we're trying to hire them to get them in place.
Well, that's why I was just, I saw West Virginia Learns, and I started looking on the computer, I still have not found them, like.
Have they come out with the process for the alternative certification?
Yeah, that's supposed to come out, that's supposed to come out in October, and that's supposed to begin in January, pretty ultimate.
That, if you have a bachelor's degree, you take two courses, and you can pass a content test, you can actually get a certification. So, that'll be available in January.
My daughter's taking test Saturday at Glenville State College.
If someone just to walk it through, it, you know.
It is, when you go to the state website for certification, it is, it can be confusing.
And at the same time, we can take pictures for the senior citizen cards for the football game.
I mean, I just think, instead of referring me back to a policy, would refer me to.
You just need steps, yeah.
You know, every single thing, just refer me to West Virginia policy 5202.
Can you handle it?
And actually, David, while they're really helping us, and Tammy and I, and, and of course, we're going to run this by door to see, you know, what, how we want to get this advertised, and, and make sure it's active, but.
Or, in the meantime, what could happen is, on our website or whatever, you'd be clicked for information, and fill it out to where one of our people called them.
Yeah.
You know, and, you know, click for information, and someone calls, and, and says, you know, we know you're interested, you know, and help them.
When somebody has an interest, the easier you make it, and the quicker you can patch for them and get them training, the, the more likely we are to retain them.
I think there should be a link directly to what needs to go then, because I've, both of my kids called, and, and spoken to Tammy, and they tell them what they need to do. But then, I go, well, I did that, but I can't find it, I can't find it. So, if he's doing the marketing, click here to begin, and take them right to the name, and drive them, what you need to do.
Sometimes it's a matter of just getting all that stuff to the certification office at the state level, and then they review it, and then they'll tell us what, what else we need. Because they're always adding forms, there's a form for this, and it's the wrong form.
I can't even find the application.
Yeah, so.
Before we move on, our last board meeting, we had asked us if we could have the Health Department come here and talk about the mask, and to what criteria they are using, and what evidence are they using, because their own CDC studies show that masks do more harm to students than good, from their own studies, so I had to ask if the super, if they could have the Health Department come here and talk to the parents about what's going on, talk to us about what's going on? Because I want to know, because their own studies is against it.
Can you put that in writing for Mr. Bundy?
I, I would have, I have no problem with that, but I had to ask.
Yeah, and, and I'll tell you the first, I'm, I'm going to say it, the last time we invited him here, it was, you were not nice to him.
I was not nice to him.
Exactly, but the man's doing his job, and he shouldn't be embarrassed.
Oh, no, now, listen, I'm a police, oh, as a former police officer, I go by evidence. I presented evidence.
Well, it's the way you presented in a public meeting, to make the guy look at it.
Here's the thing, is, if we're beholding to somebody, I want to know what evidence they're using to make decisions, and just like what was asked here on the guidelines, okay, what guidelines? That's what I'm looking for.
Put it in writing, and we'll get it to him, have your questions answered.
Okay, well, when I asked for it on the previous board meeting, I was, that was not what was relayed, it was, okay, we'll have him here at this new board meeting, fantastic. That's what I'm looking for. For all the parents of Harrison County, here's the, here's the science.
Like I said, if you want to do that, we'll do that, but the last time, it was, been embarrassing to the other board members.
So, ask for evidence?
Well, no, you weren't here for that meeting, you chose not to come to the meeting until you found out he was here, and then you came running in here and kind of attacked him, and I had, I have an issue with that. And he's a, he's, he's an employee of the Health Department, yes, he's going to answer questions, but really shouldn't be embarrassed in a public forum in that way.
I want evidence.
You would, you would put up with that going to the school, to the Health Department.
If it affects our kids, and he makes a decision that affects our kids.
We make the ultimate decision.
Okay, then why don't we? Why don't we take a vote on it? Why don't we have the, the parents vote on it? Why don't, like, here's the evidence, we are educated individuals, we have educated, here is, there's multiple, not just one, multiple dealings with the mask, so showing it does harmful effects, showing it increases your odds by 22%.
I'll tell you, I, I asked to not put it on there because of the way I felt. If you have two other board members that, that can request that be on, that he show up on the agenda, what we're asking, he doesn't have to come. But if you put your questions in writing, I can assure you that we answer them.
I want, I want him to answer to the parents.
Well, then.
If we have to be beholden to him, I want him to answer to the parents. And he should be here, if we are beholden to him, then he should be here to answer those questions.
If it doesn't work for us, we can't require him to be here, so.
Well, but if it's affecting our kids, then it should be.
If you'd like to, if your, if your goal is to have the questions answered, I can assure you they will be answered by Mr. Bundy.
Okay.
But if your goal is just to embarrass him, or try to get one over, then that's different. But if you put it in writing, that means that that's what you want.
I want to present from the evidence, I want exactly what we were asking.
Then put it in writing, and we'll make sure that they're answered, and they'll be answered in a timely manner.
Is, I'm glad to know that you had asked, take it off the agenda. I mean, at least I, I know we used to do on this, I just, I just want.
I didn't have to take it off, it was not on the agenda, we didn't place it on the agenda, and I think that was the feeling of, of fellow board members. If you have two others, and you want to put it on there, but all we can do is request, he doesn't have to come.
I just think it's important that he comes here, if it affects our kids, and we're listening to him.
I just want to weigh in on this, and, and just because, I understand what Michael is saying, but you know, Michael, there's going to be somebody else here with a doctor that's going to contradict it. I mean.
I'm going to have their studies.
I mean, I'm, again, and someone's going to bring, I mean, we've already had him here saying that the adjectives is where, I mean, that's why I need to comment, I am not a doctor, because it, it's almost like politics, and I don't understand it, for as many people that you show the evidence, they're going to, you, the other side can bring in their evidence.
Okay.
And I'm just going to be.
Right, so there should be a ban option.
And I'm not saying this is wrong, or I'm not saying.
It should be a ban option, because you, you could say, but I'm bringing you not an opinion piece, I'm bringing you the facts, I'm bringing you the evidence, the studies.
I mean, it's very, very.
I'm bringing from their own, their own company, that's what I, that's what I'm dealing with.
No, I'm not trying to contradict you, or trying to say I don't understand you, but all I'm saying is, as a board member, as many facts as you bring, the other side's going to bring facts as well. And, and I feel like that's why I go with the Health Department on my decision, because.
But what are they basically?
And don't think we're alone, 54 counties now have mask mandates.
Yeah.
And they, 54 counties, I mean, I don't have to follow the crowd, I'm following this evidence.
May, may I just say something? For the number of cases that we have, right now, we're looking at, I know you don't want to hear this, but we're trying to keep our schools open.
I do, I'm out of pure.
Yeah, for the positives that we have right now, we would be closed. If we were following the guidelines of the unmasked, we have, this just came out, we get these updated every, this came from the State Department of Ed and the Health Department, we got a letter today stating our authority to quarantine and contact trace, this is from the Board of Public Health, so it's not just our local board. And then they also share with us, you know, we've got now 54 counties masking, and I just want to say, I mean, it says in there that if kids are not masked, they're going to quarantine those classrooms. We will be closing our classrooms. But we, it says for schools, there's two different things for contact tracing right now. One is if you have a universal mask policy, and one is without. And I'm just telling you, the cases that we have right now in our schools, I'm dealing with it every day, I'm looking at the number of positives, and I am saying, can we stay open? Because they are going, if I say that the kids in that classroom were not wearing masks, they're going to say, they're going to shut me down, they're going to shut those classrooms down. Our kids need to be in school. And we are telling teachers to please take them outside while the weather's nice, it's starting to trend down, we're seeing some trending down. Today was the first day, I mean, we're in the, in the higher, higher numbers than we've seen, and a lot of counties have already shut down. We've got Preston County that has shut down for two weeks, Dodridge County has shut down, and I'm trying to stay open with the numbers that we have. And if I say that those children have masks on, they're not, the Health Department says, okay, if you're saying they're masked. I mean, and we're contract, only contact tracing those unmasked areas, and working with them, I'm, I'm just telling you, we're, we're seeing this community, if there's a large trend, and whether you agree with masks or not masks, if they say that it's, it's going to help, but kids are not wearing them all eight hours, we're giving them time to take them off, they're taking them off at lunch. No, nobody likes this. I, I agree.
And last year at this time.
And I have, I have seven pediatric doctors that send me information that say that masks will keep us in school.
And last year at this time, speaker after speaker stood there and said, let's open the schools. And they don't believe in masks, but if that's what it takes, let's put on a mask and get in there. And now, we do that, we're open, we haven't closed down a day, and somehow that's wrong.
Yeah, I haven't closed in there.
Parent choice is what I'm asking for. I'm just asking for the freedom, for, for, for people to breathe.
But now, they are considering, we're considered a masked county, so they are not going in and taking out but large groups of kids, because we're a masked county. We're going to have to contact trace every, I'd have to go into a classroom and say, is that child wearing masks? Now, I say the, we're masked, so they're not going in and just mask quarantining these large amounts of groups. So, I, I understand, I do understand, but I do have pediatric doctors telling me that it's better to have a mask than to not have a mask. So, I, I understand, there's evidence there, too.
Yeah.
And I get as many emails a day that we're not quarantining enough, we're not contact tracing enough. There's probably as many that way as there are the other way. There, there, you're right, there's not, but we are now getting information now, saying if you're a universal mask policy or county, or if you're not. So, they're giving different guidelines according, and if you, you want to look at what it is if you're in a mask policy, there, it's, it's whole classrooms and schools shut down. I just want, we want the kids in school.
I want the kids in school.
And remember, based on the legislature, we don't have the ability to bump the state school.
And every county is dealing with this, I know they are, and, since the, we are, and we're looking at, I look at the cases every single day, meet with the nurse every day, and if we can keep the kid in, or the child in, we're not quarantining.
I, I agree.
And so, then this came, this just came, too, with all that, it's almost every other day we're getting information. This is from the Public Health Authority.
Could, could maybe we get Mr. Fauci to come to one of our board meetings and talk?
I want to say, because of all this new stuff and daily things.
It's every day.
I am not in contact and talking to these doctors, or the Health Department or anything. That is why I think the decision to let Dora handle this, our superintendent, because she is the one calling every day, she is the one that gets the new policies and stuff, I am very, very comfortable with that, and I don't want to take a vote on something I don't know about on a daily basis, like, how many positives is quarantined? I don't have that information.
We're, we're coming out of a weekend with 40 positive cases, okay? And it is community spread, it's coming into us, and if I, if the kids are home, they're going to be out, it's not, it's not going to help the spread of it if they're not in school. We need, we just need to have them in school, and that's our best bet to keep them in school at this point. And I do have pediatric doctors, I mean, they are, it's our, our local doctors, I, I have a list that, there's six on that list, that's our pediatric doctors that are telling me that, you know, masks are how we keep our kids in school.
And I just want to see where studies, they're, they're basically that off of?
They're medical doctors.
It's causing more harm than good, so that's where, okay.
And I've met, well, I've talked to parents that's having issues, we had a child that's a, a prema, was born prematurely, was having issues with a mask, we've come up with another solution for that child, you know? But ultimately, it's some type of a face cover. Some are wearing a clear, clear shield, because they feel more, less restricted with that, so.
And I know there's all kinds of the bacteria that sits in the mask, that's why, with the ones that it can, it increases your odds by 23% because of the back, the bacteria. It would be better if everyone wore the face shields, because it's not storing the bacteria like the, the cough is, but.
And you know, I mean, look, I, I agree with you, I'm not a big mask person, so.
I don't think any of us like any of this.
I just like parent choice, and in other states, I do have parent choice, like, George just said, they have parent choice.
Parent, parent choice would mean that we are closed, you would have no choice.
If it's a parent choice, then we're going to go back to the non-mask.
And, and I agree with what you said last year, virtual doesn't work, that's why I'm, you know, mask it up, and let's, let's go to school.
But we are seeing that it trending down today was a, a better day, it's not, it wasn't a great day for cases. But these numbers last year, we would have been closed, with the contact tracing and the quarantining that was being done last year. So, they have loosened that up to try to help us stay in school, that they put this mask, you know, requirement in there so we can stay open.
You know, as, as a board, we, we decided that we was going to lay it on Dora's doorstep, that we was going to let her, with the science and what she, the information she gathers, let her make the decision. We all agreed to that, and all, you know, now, you know, we, we, all of a sudden, some of them want to go the opposite direction. Either way it goes, she's damned if she does, and she's damned if she don't. So, she's, we are, you know, so, so the bottom line is, I, I say, you know, she, she worked with it every day, and with all the health people, and our nurses and everything, and let's, let's follow, you know, what, what she puts forth, until at such a point, you know, that she can make a decision when we can take the mask off and take them off, you know? It did, it's all going to come down, you know? I, I think as the weather gets a little cooler.
Can we get a criteria, like?
Well, some counties are using the red and the yellow, and I will tell you, after talking with the Health Department, Harrison County stays in the red.
Yeah.
And the orange, it will never get out of mask if you want to go by that criteria. He was saying that when we look, we're looking at the number of positives every day, and when we see it start trending down, and it stays on a downward trend, then we're going to look at removing the mask. But if you go with that, we can go with the mask.
It affects the kids, not necessarily all the general public, because we know it's going to affect elderly, the overweight, or that does.
And that's what we're doing, we're not looking at the masks.
We have more kids that are positive than we've had, I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, we do have some really, we have some sick kids right now, but.
We have some in the ICU.
Yeah. I don't know the answers to it, I know every school system is.
And I, and I will message the Health Department and try to get some of them.
No, if you bring it, we'll get you the answers correctly from you. I mean, if you want Dora to get those.
Nancy Joseph is the medical doctor there. And I asked her, and she said, this is exactly what, well, I can't say it's exactly. She said, if you're sitting here, you're masked and I'm masked. And there's protection here and there's protection there. It's better than nothing for these kids. That's, I mean, she's the medical doctor for our local Health Department. I also have, like I said, there's six pediatricians that send me information. And I've asked them, I just asked them, are masks dangerous? You have to, they can't wear them eight hours solid, you know? But they take them off, put them on, but it's, we've got to keep them in school and-
Well, I'm always big on the question why.
Yeah. I understand that. And other, you know, but we also have the questions, why we're not, you know, contact tracing as much and quarantining as much. Because we have many, as many that way that feel that we're not-
Oh, 10 to 1, the email like it, 10 to 1 the other way.
Yeah, that we're not doing enough, that we're not putting them out enough, but we're following the rules as far as just, you know, quarantine when we have to.
10 to 1 the opposite way. So we're, but that just shows you the demographic. That's where I-
Taking your, yeah.
And I really think, I really think if you-
Right, but that's why the word is made up. You're talking to whoever, but that's-
I just didn't think that this time, there, I mean, we haven't trusted her and our Health Department. And I want to see the kids in school. And when we have kids in ICU in pretty good condition on ventilator, if someone says that helps, I'm all for it. If that's all, if that's all.
And I understand that. I just want to see what they're basing their stuff on.
I don't wear them. But I mean, that's what I said, you're going to have two sets for both sides. That's why, I mean, I don't hate to see us in any type of argument when it's such a health concern. And our main goal is to keep the kids in.
And I want the kids in the classroom, but I want the kids healthy. And if the CDC's own stuff is saying it hurts the kids, that's where I'm-
Have you seen any kid hurt from wearing a mask? No, here, no, I can't, I can't.
It shows increase of COVID by 23%. You're seeing the ICU is built up. I'm seeing where there's, their own study is saying it increases. So why are they just going to-
I go by, like, I had no idea how many positives we had. I had no idea how many we had last week. And I have to entrust myself with Dora. And, and I have yet to hear anyone in the hospital from wearing a mask. And, and all I'm saying is, I don't, I, you know, my feeling on it, I don't think it's a point to argue with our community. I just really don't. That's just my opinion, you know?
I have that. So.
I was going to address the contact tracing. So I think we've talked about that in superintendent's update. I don't, I don't have anything else, Mr. Hammer. Are you good?
Yeah. Is there a motion to approve consent items?
Some moved.
All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Member, new business memorandum of agreement between Mon County Health Department and Harrison County Schools. This is for dental.
Yeah, they've worked with us before. It's just a yearly agreement.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes. Why, why are we going to Mon County Health Department to get dental services?
Because they have a, if you remember, it was last year, maybe the year before, he came down and spoke with the board. He's a dentist that actually works for the Health Department. It's the only Health Department that has a dentist.
They have a mobile unit.
Yeah, they have a mobile unit. He was here and addressed it. And he, he covers the schools. We have Miney Dentistry out in the schools. And then he also, I mean, he covered the schools last year doing the same thing.
We don't have enough.
Yeah, there's, there's not enough.
There are local areas that can provide that service.
They already are, but they're busy.
Yeah, the ones that have requested to be in our schools are in our schools. He, he does have a mobile unit that they provided from the Health Department.
So this is in addition to our local dentists and our local office providing service?
And I believe this is all free service compared to the others.
Yeah, it's all free. This is all free.
It's all free. Do you have some?
In addition to, it's not exclusive.
Yeah, we approved Miney's a couple meetings.
Yeah, we did that last meeting. And they don't, you know, you may have some that fall through the cracks that, you know, that don't, aren't qualifying for Medicaid, but most health insurance, they may have health insurance, but most health insurance doesn't have dental. So these are the fall between the crack people.
No, I understand that. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't excluding any local dentists or any local doctors from being able to participate.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Superintendent's goals, those are outlined there. We spoke with those the last meeting. And they're the four goals. Is there a motion to approve? Moved and then Mr. DiVano seconded. Any discussion? Anything need changed?
Why can't I get them? Some of the air goals.
Just make sure that those are as we discussed.
Very small print. We've been a magazine.
Oh, I can, yeah, I can.
Briefly mention so that-
Yeah, those goals, annually, the board, super, board and superintendent must establish recent goals or objectives for superintendent to accomplish to give, within a given period of time. Therefore, the board president, board members presented the following goals for Mrs. Dora Stutler. Superintendent Harrison County Schools, number one, compose a comprehensive list of all properties owned by the Harrison County Board of Education. This includes all properties that house PRO officers or police officers, to include ownership of all structures in those properties. Number two, consider discussion of attendance areas and begin formulating options for future action. And actually, that was continue more than consider. So if you make that change, because we started the discussion. It was to contend, continue rather than consider. I don't know if that was my type or yours. Number three, explore legal and financial aspects of leaving the multi-county vocational technical center and/or developing our own single-county career technical education program. And four, continue streamlining employees and departments in the central office and decentralizing resources from the central office into the schools. Is that as they were presented last week? Okay, and we did have a motion and seconded, correct?
And a second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Funding request for Bridgeport High School that was presented at the last meeting and-
Question to approve funding request for Bridgeport High School.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Dee, clarify work hours for all paraprofessionals in Harrison County Schools. Ms. Stutler, you want to explain?
Yeah, we currently have three paraprofessionals that are working with our distance lab, in our distance labs. And there's concern about their hours. And we mirror their hours with the teacher because that person is on one side of the screen. So if South Harrison has a paraprofessional in that room, on the other side is the teacher. So that paraprofessional needs to be in that classroom that same length of time to get that feed. Because that paraprofessional is really, you know, not only just grading papers and taking care of those kids and supervising those kids. So I just, there's been confusion on their hours. We have one posted right now for Lincoln. And in that posting, we have posted it, and we will continue to post 7:30 to 3:00. So that we know that those, those folks are working 7:30 to 3:00. They have to be because we never know, Mr. Mork, or Dr. Mork can speak to that. You don't know what your feeds are going to be, right? And the planning for that, so.
Right. I was going to say, just in terms of, you've got the, the paraprofessionals that are actually providing supervision for the students. It's difficult for, I mean, the teacher can teach from far away, but if you've got a discipline issue, if you need to run in to get in the seat, or if you need to say yes to him, you can go to the bathroom. You can have an adult there in the room who's kind of overseeing that. That's what the paraprofessional is.
They do other duties too though, right? Like they grade.
My paraprofessional-
You've got an excellent one.
Yes, I was going to say, because right now, she's, she's worked with French and Spanish and Italian. And, you know, if there's like gaps before they have one, she's working with these kids doing flashcards, things like that. And I keep telling her, I need to find somebody that speaks, that teaches Swedish, because that's the next thing I want to bring in.
Yeah. So really, that was just to clarify the hours. There's been some confusion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Out-of-state professional leave request and out-of-state travel study request. And that was an agenda adjustment. That was, is there a motion?
I make a motion that be approved. I mean, I have this as an, a contribution.
You make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I am all for travel. And I'm excited. I think this is the first time we've had any type of travel for over a year. I was like kind of shocked when I saw it, to be honest. I just want to make sure that after all our discussion on COVID, that there aren't any guidelines that these-
Well, we are approving travel. Like, we have students that have won state competitions that now get to go to the next level. So we are approving those. I mean, these kids-
I just want nine of you kids. Wait, I don't believe me. I want them to go. I don't even want to make the call. I also don't want to-
That may be the WVU one.
And that's Laurel Canyon.
Laurel Canyon. If the, if the venue is accepting them, and a lot of times the venues are outside, like there's one that's coming up with WVU. They do a career day down there, and they are outside for most of that day. So we'll follow the same protocols if they were at-
So we may approve and on 10/29 and maybe-
But it's a venue, and we're, we're telling them, and I know Julie's working and Chris both with the principals, to vet all of these. Now it's-
I'm excited about that, about actually having this.
But there's, it's risky because the venue could cancel.
Oh, for the effort?
Yeah.
Just go on here, you're here, correct?
Yeah.
I'm the other one, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Eric, you got a mask.
I guess the big thing for us is we've had students who have earned their right to compete at the national level. They've been putting in probably over 100 hours apiece, just working their guts out to be able to make their way to the national level. It doesn't just be a tragedy if they couldn't go and compete. I mean, we plan on whatever, whatever type of guidelines you need to do, we've got those. But we've done a lot of time setting everything up, getting everything due, Mr. Rico, making sure we get everything in a timely manner and making sure that, we try to do everything by the book and keep them the safest possible. But I really think it's going to be just an absolute disservice to these students if they don't get to compete for the national championship, which they have a very, very good shot.
Listen, I'm 100% and I'm excited about this. I don't, only reason why I brought it up is I don't want something to happen that would jeopardize that. That's the only reason why I brought it up. I'm excited about it. I want to see our kids doing things like this again. So I just want to make sure, I want them to be aware of all guidelines and steps. There's something that's-
I think most of the venues, when you're traveling, will send you what their restrictions are and, and will take, make sure that everybody knows before they go. And they could be canceled by the venue. You never know.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, reinstate contracted salary amount for fiscal year 2020, 2021 salary schedule for director of maintenance and facilities. Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we reinstate the salary for 2021 for our head of maintenance.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
And I feel that he was on the job, but July 1st, that he'd be retroactive back to July 1st.
Is that what you feel, you're understanding?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. No old business, no policy updates. Personnel matters. Is No motion?
I make a motion.
I'll make a motion too.
Moved by Mr. DiVano. Is there a second?
No policy update.
There's not. No personnel matters.
It's a job description.
Person, no policy updates. Yeah, personnel matters. It's been moved by Mr. DiVano. Is there a second?
There's a second, yeah.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Legal and disciplinary matters, none. Board member comments? Mr. Goddard?
No, I had said everything I wanted to say. Looking for answers.
Ms. Messenger?
Dennis, have a great week.
Couple things, you know, come into view. And maybe it hasn't got started here too bad, but it's, it has happened a cold time. I'm not a fan of TikTok and all that other. I don't, I don't even go online. I don't go on Facebook. I don't do none of that. But I guess on TikTok, they have a thing that goes on where kids have a tendency to go into a school and destroy something, okay? And it's, it's a game, you know? And it's a game that where if you, you know, break it, you should have to pay for it. And I think that if we don't set down on these children, that if they go in and they destroy something in the school, one, not only should they have to be paid, pay for it or replace, and then there should other be further consequences in regard to not, you know, where they're, get to spend time at home with their parents, rather than be placed in an in-school suspension setting or anything like that. Because, you know, you just can't go, allow them to go around destroying things and there not be a severe consequence. I know many years ago had a young man that shot a banking board out of our gymnasium with a, one of those ball bearings, okay? It cost his parents $900 at that time to replace that banking board. And then he spent the next week with his parents and all. And he had to start doing little odd jobs, cutting grass, things of that nature there. And he was, he was a good kid. Not saying he was a bad kid, he just made a bad choice. But there has to be a consequence. And the consequence has to be severe. And if other kids know that this is going on and this happens, that there is a severe consequence. So, you know, I just think that, like I said, there's too many things out there, you know, in this day and time for kids to say, hey, well, I want to try that, or I'm going to do that. And I just think they all have to know going in that there is consequences for their actions. Thank you.
Mr. DiVano?
What is there left to say? No, I don't have any comments.
Okay. I have nothing. So is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Children of peace, go in peace. Children of peace, go in peace.